My name is Rojit Jones. I am the twenty seven, so in twenty seventeen batch of IRS income tax. So currently I am posted in Chennai as Assistant Commissioner of Income Tax. So I was there as a student of Geography Option in Nicholas classes in Ireland I S. So like everybody else, I was also confused about taking which optional for the UPSC means. So finally I ended up taking geography. Because that was the subject which I thought it was possible to study and to reproduce based on logical connections. So even the UPSC expects us to make such logical connections in the paper and that is what we are valued for. Okay, so today what I will be doing is I will just go through the basic features of geography as an optional which you all might be already knowing. But I'll just take for one or two minutes just to describe what it is and how UPSC is framing questions. So that will be the initial part, initial one or two minutes. Then we'll move on to the the topic of the session, that is how to make an answer which looks like or which is a geography optional answer. Or how to bring in that part in the answers which you write in geography option. So these are mainly concentrated on questions which can have overlaps between GS papers and optional papers. So how to approach that in GS and how to approach, what will be the different approach in geography option. So that will be one part. So the next part will be the structure of the questions that the UPSC is putting across to us in geography optional. So after this, this will be a brief session. After this, I have taken a few questions from previous two, three years. So which are more inclined towards the general studies nature. So that questions we'll discuss. I I'll give my inputs on how I will approach that question when I write it in a GS paper. And what difference I will make it in while writing it in an optional paper. I think that will make things clear about how to approach questions in geography optional. So starting off features of the subject, you all know before choosing this, you might have heard from various inputs that this is a very vast subject. It is true that it is a vast subject and the academic sessions for taking the geography option might stretch more than four to five months. But the fact is that the theoretical portion or what we have to study by heart or remember, that is very restricted. Mostly the syllabus topics are loosely worded or you can say it's open-ended. So that is most, the skill that UPS is looking for is application of whatever you have learned in that area. So whatever you have learnt in theory, in geographical concepts, you have to apply that in real world problems. Or real world challenges that come to us in the form of questions. So even though the syllabus is vast, it's easily, you can tackle it easily by restricting your static study to theory and its criticisms, then concentrate more on answer writing and presentation skills for the general part. So that is one point. Then the question paper itself, if you see, the static portion will be centered around the theoretical questions in physical setting, the theories and models. Apart from that, whatever is being asked is application of these models and when you get into paper too, it's totally generic in nature. Where the questions would seem like it's a general question wherein a non-geography optional student can also attempt it. But the point is that he might be able to attempt it, but we have to bring in some technical terms or we have to convince the UPSC examiner that we have studied in-depth geography option. So that is not a very tough task. Only thing is you have to know a bit of a skill or you just have to master that skill by practice. So the brief demonstration I will give you in this session or at least what I did and it worked for me. So you can try so that will find some results because across years people have used it and they have found results in that. So I'll just share my screen with the small document. I hope you can see the document. It has only text, no images. So just go through the words with which are appearing on the slides as and when I talk. So the first heading, you can see what makes an answer with which is in geography optional. So the major, how to make an answer which is, which has to be written in geographical terms. So the major suggestion you might be getting or which I would suggest also is link your answers with the concepts you learned in paper one. So what happens is this cross-linking of concepts which you learned in paper one with your answers in paper two. Or for that matter, any answer in paper one itself. In paper one itself, you are getting what you call generic questions on world climate or world environment. So when you link some theoretical parts or some models that you studied with the, with those answers, what is happening is the examiner will feel that okay, you have, you've got a high-level understanding of the application of geographical concepts. So that is what UPS is looking for, that whether you are able to apply the concepts in for real world problems. So based on the questions in previous two, three years or maybe I wrote in two thousand sixteen means, so even in that year itself, that trend was visible that we studied lot of static theories and their examples, but mostly we were confronted with questions that were centered around generic topics. So that application is what UPS is looking for. So this linking might help you in convincing them that okay, this guy has studied. So for example, concept of urban heat islands or climatic region classifications, that can be easily applied in paper two. As well as generic questions in paper one. There might be more, you can make up your own strategies. These are just few examples which I'm telling which just come on top of my mind. So the second point which I wanted to say is to think along the syllabus. So that is, this is the most easiest method and this is the most effective method, I would say, which, which has assured returns in generating a geography answer. So by thinking along the syllabus, I mean you'll have the major headings of the syllabus with you. By now, at least you know the broad divisions of physical setting, climatic divisions, biogeography and all those things. It would, it would be good if you remember the subheadings also in some, to some extent, okay. It just creates a thought flow, easier thought flow rather than doing crisis management in the examination part. If you know how to think, then it will be easier to generate points. So this is one strategy which I have used and it is very effective. So this one will be very much evident when we discuss the two, three questions that I have picked. So when I, the generation of points is purely according to the terms of the syllabus. So I'm not going much deeper into that. You'll get to see that when I discuss the questions. So then connection of your answers in your answer paper to the present world events. So that, that again convinces the examiner that you are understanding the current scenario within a geographical context. So when you write examples or when you quote any instances of success stories or success models or model development of any, any topic for that matter, regional development or cities development. Make it relevant, make that answer relevant to the present world by quoting some recent study or very recent news item which comes to your mind. For example, if you're ask, if the question is regarding bleaching, coral bleaching, you can quote a recent bleaching event, any factors which you know that contributed to that bleaching event and link that with the theoretical part you have studied. You might have studied reasons of coral bleaching in oceanography and how that applies in the real world. What caused this, for example, any specific barrier bleaching, what factors caused it? So linking that means you have understood the concept and current world events you are viewing through that prism. So that again projects a very good image of your understanding on the paper. Next point is regarding maps and diagrams. You, everyone might be already doing this, but I just wanted to stress one point is that when you are using maps and diagrams, try to make that a meaningful map or a meaningful diagram. Diagram for theoretical parts anyway, you have different diagrams which you might have already made part of your syllabus. For maps, for instance, suppose any locational what is happening, okay. For maps, for instance, any locational aspect is being asked of a particular industry. So in that sense, if you are depicting that location of the industry in a, you're writing the various factors which determine the location of that industry. So it might be availability of raw material, availability of transport, then markets. All these things might be there which you might be explaining. So in the map, rather than just depicting that one location of the industries, you depict the, try to depict the factors which also determine. For example, if a international sea line is passing close by and that is resulting in more markets. So that can be marked. So all the, make that map more valuable by adding more what you call insights which appear in your answer. So that makes more relatable. And the map should not be very disjointed, just showing locations. Rather than it should show, it should depict the answer properly. Okay, so that is one part. Then marking of maps and diagrams, you, you might be using graphs like S curves or so many things you might be using to depict your answer. But the, make sure that the examiner would understand what is being depicted, the X axis, Y axis, everything and the maps heading should be given. So the labeling is very important and it should be properly inside a box so that it is clearly visible and easily understandable. So that part, that makes it less artificial. So people, even I used to do that in the beginning, I used to simply push in maps and diagrams. But which were not too relevant to the answer. But later on, I understood when I, I was also engaged in correcting papers in the institute after my, during my leave days. So I understood that there should be a connection between the figures and the maps we're drawing the answer and what we write. So that you try to establish based on the discussion of points that you are doing in the answer. Like for, for instance, the location of industries which I Okay, so in this, the rest are almost overlapping points. Including examples from across the world of similar examples which we will discuss along with the questions. And government schemes as always in all, even for GS and geography optional, it is a given thing. So based on this, we have a certain set of questions which the UPSC has been putting in the optional papers. So majorly we can categorize it into four parts, four types of questions. First is the pure theory question wherein you'll get a theory or a model to be explained. And maybe a step ahead would be its criticism or its relevance. So this is mostly based on our static study. You have to study this. There is no there is no need to make it more geographical because it is a core geography question. So the second category is pure theory and its application. So they, they might ask one theory, Weber's industrial location model or any other model for that matter and its application. So for any model, you have to have some things in handy. What is the model? What it proposes, then its application, its relevance worldwide and where was it formulated that is there? And its relevance in India. And maybe country level or state level examples for its relevance and its non-relevance. So that makes that thing fully exhausted. Maybe for one model, you might have to prepare for at least three or four pages. So that's it. You can handle all questions which come from that model in that, in that material itself. So that is one part. Again, this is connected with our static study, not generally questions. It's core geography. You just have to include the present locational setting of the country or the world to explain the theory. That's all. The third and fourth categories is, what is the main topic of discussion in our today's session, is the geography optional questions from GS topics like disaster management, environment, internal security, economy, quality and international relations. So these are few broad areas which came to my mind. There might be more areas, but these are the areas which generally I find overlapping with geography options. So that was one other reason why I opted for geography optional because the, even though the subject coverage was vast or it took more time, but I study, when I study geography optional in some sense, GS was also covered. So I could restrict my GS preparation to answer writing rather than doing core study. Okay, so these two types, then the next category is current affairs and schemes. The, when the question is like you explain a initiative, government initiative or a scheme and what is its relevance in the economy, in the geographical setting or physical setting, its challenges in India, all those things. So these are, these can be asked in both GS and optional questions. So what, for explaining how to tackle this third and fourth type of questions, I have, what I've done is I have taken two, three questions which are more aligned towards GS topics. So we'll see how we approach that questions in GS and how to approach that questions in optional. So just before the slide, I mentioned three, four methods, three, three or four methods to make an optional, make an answer which is a geography optional answer. So in all questions, we might not be able to apply all these points because there is a time constraint when we write the examination. So mostly we might stick to one or two aspects in this five or six points. Maybe inclusion of one map or diagram might make it geographical. And maybe thinking along the syllabus will help us generate more geographical points. That is enough. You need not concentrate on generate, applying all these methods and making the answer totally geographical because that is not needed. We have a time constraint and a space constraint. So within that, apply any one or two methods. If you, when you apply thinking along the syllabus, if you get enough points, then no need to go beyond go beyond and apply more and more examples, governments. If you think that the space is filled and at least one diagram if you can include, then that is enough. So this is just a broad outline which I gave. I also won't be able to apply all these methods in one answer. So just keep that in mind. I just don't want to stress that all these have to be applied everywhere. If one fails the other, like that, keep on going. So now I'll just take a few questions which appeared in last two, three years. So this is one question on digital divide. This appeared in an optional question paper. So the question is, digital divide in India needs a quick redressal to reduce regional disparity in development. Elaborate with suitable examples. So when, suppose if this question is coming in GS paper, maybe it can come in economic development in GS three. So the, my answer would somewhat look like this. I will give an introduction on digital divide. What is digital divide? That people are being denied access to digital technologies or digital services based on different categories. So World Development Report itself was there on digital divide. So if you have that statistic or if you have that introduction, that is well and good. My, if I don't get anything, my standard introduction is to define what it is and convey that, that concept is clear to me. So in the second part, that is the main body of the answer. So if you check the question, you can understand that the question itself suggests that digital divide is causing disparity in regional development. So in our main body of the answer, we have to establish or we have to give points in support of the argument that digital divide and development are connected and the digital divide in India is causing developmental issues and disparities happening. So that is what is being done in this second part. Digital infrastructure and how it is connected to digital divide and how is it a hindrance? Okay, so major points will be government focusing, government's focus is on online service delivery. So if digital divide is existing, population will be left out of governance. Information and communication sectors, so mo- most of the service delivery in terms of education, healthcare delivery, especially in this COVID-related scenario, it's going on towards digital oriented modes. So and the middleman existing in India, basically in any service delivery for any government service or any other aspect, middleman used to exist. So the digital mode is being promoted remove that. So three, two, three, four points like this I'll add, integration with economy, all those things, they are GS points. Okay, then so since the question is on regional development, I might add a location-based example on how digital divide has created a problem. Okay, then in the second part of the question would be what is to be done? How to enhance connectivity or general suggestions you can give, computer literacy devices, spectrum options, all those things you can connect. Conclusion is the general conclusion, what is, what are the present initiatives, what we are doing and how is it aligned to addressing this digitally? So now when we move on to the same question being presented to us in, what you call a geography optional paper. You can see I have made some changes in the thought flow itself. So in this answer, I applied that syllabus, thinking by syllabus method. And if you see, it's not a method per se, just to generate points, I went by that method. So again, if you get no other introduction, you start with defining the digital divide. Then try to categorize the core subjects into the points related to geography. So this is what I did by going by the, what you call syllabus terms. So when I went into demography, I understood that digital divide itself can happen between rural and urban based on the access to facilities. Then age divide, you understand that young people are more access, more have more access to digital devices. Male, female divide. So these are all analysis based on demography of a population. So you can add more points or you can elaborate on these points. I just gave the subheadings based on literacy levels. So for example, in the present instance of registration for COVID vaccination itself, you you can understand that English literacy is a prerequisite maybe for understanding what is happening in the app, regional language issues are there. So that digital divide, how is it promoting? Issues in regional, regional development is one part. If somebody has raised then, let me finish this question and I'll come back to it. Then, then digital divide in terms of physical setting. How heli-tracks, there will be difficulty in connectivity of digital infrastructure, then islands. Then climatic conditions, how it affects. So these are the main, only, I've given only two headings. I have explored that much only just for the sake of in demonstrating the method of how to do it, I have just gone through, if you go through the other syllabus headings, you might be able to generate points. So the point is, we also have a space constraint. So I'm restricting to this much points. I might not divide the answer exactly like this. I might give the headings of rural, urban divide, age divide, female, male, female divide and how, and give location-based examples, for instance, in this state, already female literacy is below male literacy. And so that is promoting regional divide when a digital infrastructure is digital services are being pushed through. So that is one method. Then, then I move on to, so the digital divide and regional development issue has been properly established. So you can easily generate examples for islands and climatic conditions and heli-tracks. Then in each of these heads, mention how it affects regional disparity, we already discussed. Then you can conclude based on the marks of the question, you can elaborate or you can conclude what you can do. What is to be done for that part, you can expand if there is space for writing. Then the conclusion will be those are the issues which you pointed out and how to address that issues, maybe some basic suggestions. I put that female computer literacy programs and project loon which was closed down, but anyway, some PPP model or something can be worked out to implement. So this was the difference between how I approach it in a geography optional and how I did it in a GS question paper. So I think somebody had raised and she's still active. Okay. I don't think he's active. So we'll move on to the next question. So next question is again a previous year UPSC question. The question is, the regional, has the regional aspiration of people of J N K been addressed through reorganization of the state? Make an assessment. It's a one-year-back question, question from one-year-back paper. So mostly in GS, it might come in GS two. Okay, so introduction, standard introduction in GS, I will write the name of the act which introduced the changes and the administrative result, how many states was divided into union territories, whatever it is. Then based on the question itself, it is clear that we have to see if the regional aspirations have been met by the reorganization process. So first we'll start with what is the regional aspiration? Historical context, Article three seventy giving it a special status. And how did Article three seventy give special status to the population? How did they perform in the independent era? How it was, how has it helped or? You can have your personal opinions, you can argue with facts also. So how the reorganization impacted, it became state from union territory. So there is a federal change in federal structure. Then representation in parliament, delimitation, permanent residency of that state, Article thirty-five A. Then security issues, administration and governance. So these are the broad headings which you can elaborate. Then conclude with how regional aspirations were met or not, or do we have a, are we in the right direction or not? Keep personal opinions aside and restrict to the question. Okay, so since this is a GS two answer, almost all the impacts which I have mentioned are related to constitution, the quality, the structure of our governance, etc. Now if I move on to the geography optional answer. See, in this question, there might not be serious changes in the structure of thinking. It will be just the variation of points or the stress of points which I put up. The, the question is such that we cannot entirely convert it into geography as such. But we can use some of the techniques which we mentioned in that first slide and make it, what you call a bit geographical when you read it. So intro can have the same intro, but not more into the politics side. But you can describe the geographical features, what is bordering which unit territory, etc., etc. Then map isn't needed in this question because government has notified the new geographical boundaries in that very recently when this question came. So that you can represent along with the major geographical features. So that is one plus point which we added from GS two this part. GS also, you can add a map, there is no point, but GS two quality, it's better if you focus more on the constitution and the politics. Regional aspirations, it will be almost the same. I won't allot, so the, so the major difference is allocation of word budget here. I won't discuss much on Article three seventy or what it did. Maybe three to four lines, that's all. I'll finish it off. Then how the reorganization impacts, the points might be different, it might be more related to the population, demography, etc. For instance, jobs and economy, how investments will come up, how industries will ensure flow of capital, what will happen to the local economy? Will their youth get jobs, etc.? What was the situation before? What is happening after the reorganization? Women's rights, property and marriage issues were there related to Article three thirty-five A, that permanent residency ship. So that you can discuss. Then integration with the rest of India, that is more a societal point of view. So do we, the earlier system did it give a special status and reduce the integration? We could not travel much, all the restrictions were there, that you can discuss. And obviously, security issues, border management, everything comes into place because it's will the, because people always prefer peace. So will that be addressed by this amendment? Or so this reorganization. So these are the aspects which you can include in this part and stress on that more. You bring on, bring down the points related to quality to the last, based on a ranking you can put out. Suppose the representation in parliament and all, I have put it in the end. That also, based on your time, space constraints, you can arrange. So basically what I did was I removed the quality aspects of federal structure, delimitation and all those things. And I added some societal impact, impact on population, jobs, economy. You can add allocation of physical resources, river management and all those things. So that will be a geography answer. Plus, we added a map which had the new boundaries, notified new boundaries and the physical features of that area. So that is how you handle a conclusion and all can be, it's all personal, you can restrict to the geography or the, how it will, how it will affect the population, is it positive and what all extra is needed to ensure the regional aspirations. So this is the second question which I wanted to discuss. So both these questions are properly GS questions which we handled somehow in geography optional method also. So that is the general methodology you use. So you, you might have understood from these two questions that there is no thumb rule, how to write a geography answer, but what I used to do was you can keep practicing GS questions and write it for geography optional. And before maybe paper two examination, I used to revise that questions only. So that I, it has helped me to generate points easily. So one more question with regards to trade. So these three topics are picked such, these three questions are picked such that they are from topics which are totally GS type. One is One is a digital divide related to economy. Then second is a very polity related question. And this is a multinational corporate impact of again economy and globalization and trade. So, this is again a GS three question, so we'll see how it goes. So, critically analyze the role of multinational corporations in India's economic development with suitable examples. So, basically, you need to evaluate how multinational corporations M N C is helped in India's economic development and give examples. So, I am not in specific discussing any examples in any of the answers because uh examples vary on personal basis. Based on your preparation, you can quote any examples you want, you just keep them handy, that's all. So, what is a multinational corporation? Or you start with a statistic based on uh how it promoted jobs or how it when was it brought in. Well liberalization, all those things you can mention and give a one line intro or two line intro based on the marks. So, critically analyze means M N C is how it's benefited Indian economy and how it has uh how what what problems it has created or what. Challenges we have to counter. So, benefits to the Indian economy, my answer will be if since it's a GS three examination. I will concentrate mostly on the GS three syllabus topics. So, my answer will somewhat look like uh based on economic survey. The top points which or the terms which occur in the survey or the budget document will be mostly visible here. So, it brings in foreign investment, job creation, integration with global economy, stronger coupling of Indian markets. And then utilizing a demographic dividend, balance of trade, global supply chain. So, these are just headings, you can just like write a one uh one liner on how uh M N Cs. Are impacting this heading. So, that is your answer. Then is there a flip side? Obviously, yes, critically analyzed question, so we have to write a flip side. So, equitable growth, how uh district opportunities are captured by the most educated or the most skilled people in India? That is what is elite capture. That is also an economic term which you might have seen in economic survey or uh books which you might have read. Will it based on Indian economy? Then producing, are we uh if M N Cs come in, do they produce for the domestic demand or for produce for the uh foreign uh global demand? How does this impact our uh local consumption? Then global economic shocks will anyway impact our uh domestic economy if we are totally coupled with that. Then competition for Indian P S U's, then profit shifting concept. Because multinational companies, they can whatever they earn in India, they have their legal structures to shift their profits and reduce taxation. And make it to foreign low tax jurisdictions. So, all these are the flip sides and you see all these points are very much centered around economy. And economics uh and taken mostly uh you might have seen this in economic survey. So, this is your GS three answer, give a general conclusion also. Now, in geography optional, when I come into it. So, again, if I go through the syllabus or I try to link with the paper one. All these strategies I have tried to put in here to just to generate more points. So, generally intro on how M N Cs have been driving the Indian job sector or any other statistic which you have. Just go for a brief introduction, then how India has benefited. So, the terms itself I am using will start to change, is more of population, gender, then caste, social ladder. Urbanization, resources, all these things coming. So, these are all geographical terms and gives a feel that even though I'm saying the same things which I said in the previous answer. I have presented the same thing in a bit of a different manner. So, large work, the points, I am not elaborating on the points, gender neutral uh employment. Uh you may maybe you can boost up uh labor force participation rate, that's L F P R of women. Then moving on the social ladder, that is specific to specific analysis to the Indian context of jobs. Because we had caste based divisions, so that will get removed. Then faster urbanization, all these things, urbanization and all, you can have loads of examples also. Many cities which developed based on that, in special economic zones based on that. Then use of resources, we were mostly what you call a raw material exporting company uh country. And based on this manufacturing companies or whatever which came in after lip placement, we changed to a manufacturer, we started making use of that. So, all those are related to geography and all those uh related aspects. Then growth of allied sectors like hotels, traveling ports, airports and everything is related to. The growth of uh industries and M N Cs based investments. So, this is how that has been managed in a geographical or geography optional paper. Then in map, obviously, you can highlight industrial agglomerations. It should connect, so basically the point which I mentioned there. Uh whatever you have mentioned in the benefits or in the field which are going to been mentioned in the flip side, that should be highlighted in the map or diagram. Like whether it uh helped or not, or the analysis should be based on that. So, that is one thing, then whether is there any flip side? Obviously, flip side is there, same points which I mentioned, some of them will be same. Elite capture, global labor competition. So, again, if you see, the analysis is more based on demography, population and geographical aspects of the country. Environmental concerns, then lobbying for free trade, free trade agreements, islands of growth, read how it from how M N Cs. Will you invest more and more money in big uh cities like Mumbai or related economic centers like Pune? And the rest of the Maharashtra state or they won't get any benefit of that. So, they look for economies of skill and that again promotes regional disparity in economic development. So, these points you can add, so that's what makes it a geography answer. So, these are the three questions which I wanted to discuss. So, I have pretty much summarized what I wanted to say. So, the basic point was, it's not a tough job to convert a GS answer into a geography answer. Whatever points which I mentioned in this first slide. Apply any one or two of those, you might. You might be able to convert your job uh GS answer to a geography answer. So, that's what I have to say regarding this. Now, anything else? I'm almost done with my session, actually. Any doubts or any clarifications are there, we can start.
Sir, good evening, sir. I I am Farvati. I have a doubt regarding this uh map you have mentioned in the uh in the first slide actually. And you have told that you can while you just you don't need to add only the location while you are drawing the map. Or in a general, I'm asking about the general studies only. So, how will you improve that map that you have just told like? Like you can add two or more description, yeah, you were telling about the industries and some other. Hello?
Yeah.
Uh so you were you were telling about like you can add more matter to the same location like industries and port and all. So, can you repeat that thing again? I didn't get that actually.
So, uh usually when you address a question, uh I don't know if it's applicable for the uh GS. GS if if somebody asks for a location aspects of a uh an industry, you just draw a map. If it is global, you draw a global map, you if it is India, you draw that uh Indian map and highlight the locations where these industries are located. Okay, and you stop with that. See, in optional, if you are taking that. To forward, the same question is asked in optional. An industry will have multiple factors which resulted in that industry being located at that point. Maybe it's the river source, water source from the river. Maybe it's the transportation facility in the form of a port, maybe there is an international sea line that is passing. And the resource availability, rail line, any any uh factors, any number of factors can be there, markets also. So, what I said was, if you are uh doing a location uh answer, industrial location answer in. Geography optional paper two, you just highlight apart from the location of that industry. The factors which contributed to that also you can highlight. For example, the raw, suppose if it's a steel industry, the raw materials which promoted its uh location there. The raw material locations can also be highlighted. That is what I meant. Similarly.
Sir, uh I uh the thing is that like how will you exactly uh mention that in the map itself like you will uh.
No, it will be location.
Different different like symbols are in the same location, but how will you like? Like, how will you? Okay, sir. Sir, the thing is that I got confused because like if one Jamshedpur is the place and you can like mention uh like. Steel industry might be there or some other uh uh that location, some river might be there. But in the same place, like if four more thing is there, then you you could uh like uh mark the symbol, actually, that is what you meant, right?
No, that is based on your presentation style. I don't.
Okay, okay.
I don't want you to crowd the map with more data. Maybe if you are selecting one location, just zoom in that part. If suppose if you do Jamshedpur, you take that part and enlarge it, draw the river and everything and say that, okay, this is these factors have contributed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Sir, I just wanted to ask a general question like, what is your approach towards the solving the previous year question papers? Paper one and paper two, how often do you solve?
Yeah, okay. So, uh as far as solving papers are concerned. I believe that that is the most crucial exercise that we all must do. Either you have to go for test series or uh and the other parallel practice that we have to do is solving question papers. So, after a module study, for example, if you are attending classes, maybe in the first month or so, geomorphology may might start with that. If you have finished, uh the classes have finished, you do your own study based on the notes. And maybe if you want to add on from some other book also you add on. Then after that, you start with uh at least uh solving questions of geomorphology. So, uh write answers, keep on writing answers from two thousand fifteen onwards. I think it might be relevant for you. So, when I I was preparing, I used to take previous six to seven years question papers. And even if you prepare model answers, you uh first when you write, I think the. We we might have a lot of inhibitions in starting to write, so we might be concerned about the quality of the answers. So, there is no problem in that, the but uh I felt the better approach is you prepare model answers for that. Suppose if uh geomorphology, the theoretical questions have been asked. And you have been asked to compare two theories of erosion or denudation or whatever it is. So, you take time, maybe half an hour, you prepare a proper answer, then study that answer, so that should go into your mind. The main thing that you're in the initial times, main thing you are trying to uh learn is how to structure your answer. Suppose if you are asked to compare two theories, the points, the skill should be, the focus should be on how to structure your answer. So, that I don't know if you have started preparation now or you've already been doing. So, if you have started preparation now.
When it for the past three to four years.
Okay, so the uh if you might know the issue which you have, uh I don't know exactly. So, my issue was that uh I focused on time management a bit later. I started with focusing on uh structuring the answers well and getting my content into the head, that thought process was my issue. So, I focused on that. So, I used to take previous year questions, maybe I take half an hour and I prepare proper answers. And that was a uh I uh had a book which had contained proper answers for all those things. That used to be a good revision material also. So, after that, only I started focusing on time management. I used to write maybe same questions or uh test series questions for time management. So, previous year questions I practiced for my structuring the answers and the series I used to do it for my time man.
Thank you so much, sir. So, one more question I had to had to ask is that uh how did you balance your optional and GS preparation? While you were writing mains, while you were preparing for the three months main.
Okay. So, optional anyway, as you all know, in the presence system of examination that requires that occupies more almost to five hundred marks. So, there is considerable importance for optional in terms of your academic hours you spend. Even if you take the suppose, if you have gone for coaching or even otherwise, if you are doing self-study also, optional will take up most of your time. So, that is justified because marks in optional can decide your service and decide whether you're in or out, everything, because it's five hundred marks. So, it is eh appropriate to focus more on optional, there is no problem in that. I used to study right optional, uh but as I said, geography had an advantage in that sense that I can. Study my GS also along with geography second paper, even first paper also, global geopolitics. So, my GS preparation was mostly centered around newspaper reading and answer writing practice, to be honest. And very few static portions only I had to sit and study like, for example, history. And I was very weak in that part, so those portions I sat and studied, otherwise, general portions I used to do answer writing practice mostly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir. Sir, I am preparing for sir BPSC. So, sir, what are the basic options, sir, books for geography optional?
Basic books.
Yes, sir, I am beginner, sir, I am started before sir two months, sir.
Okay, so majorly, I think, if you have joined any coaching institute, they might give a basic set of notes. So, the first you can start with that if you have that or any uh proper set of notes if you can procure, that will be a good starting point. And uh I start with the N C R Ts of eleventh and twelfth. You uh you can understand the concepts very well. I had started with that because that will help in your GS geography and uh optional geography also. So, that will be very good. Then moving on, I did Majid Hussain. And I think I am not able to recollect the book names properly fully, but Majid Hussain was the major book which I did. And then mostly online resources. You want, I can, I think I'll find out the book list and share with you later.
Okay, sir. Good evening, sir.
Yes.
Sir, Kushang Gupta, this is.
Yeah, sir.
Sir, I recommended that uh we should try coaching for optional or not, yeah, we we do self studies.
For optional?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Kushang, so the issue is um for optional, we have uh two, three issues to tackle. One is, if you are able to study on your own and you have enough materials, then you can do self-study, there is no problem. The second issue is regarding uh uh doing mock tests. So, if somebody is there to uh frame questions for you and put you uh through a series of tests before your examination. Then also it's fine. And the third point is, somebody should give you feedback regarding your writing. So, these three things uh to ensure that coaching institutes are mostly the easiest option which you have. So, they will almost be in a package. Otherwise, if you're doing self-study. Uh I found a little bit of struggle in uh what you call maybe getting my answers corrected in the initial phase. Where I don't know whom to ask and I don't know whether it is, whether the feedback is correct or not, I had doubts in that. And when I do, when I was doing self-correction also, will not be convinced whether it's correct or not. So, that issue, if you can, if you have any resource person or somebody, then that is fine. These three things are what you should focus. If you have uh own resources for all these things, then you can opt for self-study. Otherwise, I would suggest uh classes for optional because that occupies almost what you call five hundred marks. And that can decide uh what your entry into the rank list or. So, GS, I think, see, the problem is in GS papers, even if you don't go for coaching. The questions or the syllabus is almost out in the open, it's for open access. As in everybody is reading newspaper, the same Hindu is being circulated across the country. So, the access or the current device materials from numerous institutes will also be there. So, the access to material is okay in that and the feedback also, I think, or a lot of uh feedback you'll get from your peers. But optional is something specific uh which requires year on year, the update is required. So, that I felt maybe coaching institute can ease your job, you might be able to do it on your own. I don't uh have any uh counter opinions on that, but if you these three three things, if you are able to find, then uh self-study is also okay.
Thank you.
Sir, good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Sir, first of all, thank you for the wonderful section, sir. Uh sir, I would like to know about case studies in geography. Uh sir, how to pair case studies in geography? And uh sir, how important is uh case studies and how how can you please explain how to uh use case studies while writing geography answers?
Okay. Okay, studies will uh based on the syllabus, what you call, as I already discussed, you go through each topics of the syllabus. And case studies and examples are almost the same thing. Uh so, if you take agriculture or cropping patterns, so go topic wise and select the ministry websites. Uh they will have their annual reports, uh all the ministries will have their annual reports. So, at least one or two examples you will be able to get from uh all these topics which we have in our website, uh sorry, I now we have in our syllabus. So, based on the question itself, you can. So based on the question itself, you can use, so only one or two case studies we can prepare and keep. Others, what we have to do is, we have to act based on the, use our presence of mind in the examination for itself. So general topics like agriculture, cropping pattern, watershed management, all these things you can get from ministry annual reports. And anyway, traditional resources like Yojana Kurukshetra always sits there, but make it a point that you don't extend your number of case studies beyond one for a single point. So that becomes, that will make your material very wide and you won't be able to revise. So restrict your case studies to one or two at max for one topic.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Sir, how much time did you took to cover this vast syllabus?
Okay, so maybe I started optional classes in somewhere around in May two thousand fifteen. By I think, classes went on till October or November. So then it was so close to four, five months, classes will be there. Maybe one to one and a half hours per day on weekdays. So in between, we also had what you call this test series also, so over and above five months you can keep for optional. But as I said, even though you will have a lot of sessions in geography, but mostly you can restrict your, the questions are restricted in that static part to very few. So that part only you'll have to sit and study, the others are more, what you call generally nature, so how you tackle it, what I showed you today, that strategy you can employ, but coaching institutes or any institute for that matter, they will give you a traditional set of points for each topic, so classes might be stretched out, but you can manage that second part very easily, it won't be stressful.
Hello, Roji. Dice here.
Yeah.
See, I have one specific doubt, like, say, whenever we study, say, paper one or paper two, we will try to study everything or we will try to cover a book completely, so for example, for paper two, we will take the example of paper two. Say, if you are doing it through the cooler, we will try to cover, you completely cover the book. Like, what should be the strategy for studying paper two? That is what all things we have to study as a theory and we have to memorize and where all we have to focus on this application and answer writing, like where we have to limit the study.
So in paper two, we have, we go through the syllabus, you can find that, that physical setting part is the very static part, which we have, where we have to study the geographical features, how they are their origins. And climatic part, so all these are very static portions, which we have to maybe follow cooler, that will be an exhaustive book for studying that part. So but as and when we move on to resources and then again going to industries and human geography and that part. The quest, even though the syllabus, cooler might cover it in a very, what you call exhaustive manner, they might go from covering each and every point of the syllabus. We are getting questions which do not require that much of wide road learning, we don't have to read a standard book for answering those questions. So only the first part I would suggest that the static portions where we learn about the geographical features, we have to rely on some textbook or class notes. Then beyond that, the in the human geography part and the generic type of questions where we dealt within the session. It should be mostly, I feel, the preparation strategy should be mostly aligned with the questions we are getting. So if you analyze the previous year questions, it is all more generic questions. We don't need the points from cooler or the short notes from cooler to answer that. We just require a geographical thinking and we just have to apply any of the techniques. And just generate some points which are, which are very common sense, which are very commonsensical, but we might forget to observe them in a geographical perspective. So like observing in the prism of population, gender and age, for example, in the digitally white twisted. So that is, even though if you cover cooler book or any other book fully, you won't be able to generate those points. Only if you think on that lines, you will get it. So practice more of answer writing in that part. Is what I would suggest and what I did also was on that lines, so that helped me in handling second paper without much burden on sitting and studying and more on answer writing.
Sir, the time between prelims and mains will be enough for time management of writing answers or else we are supposed to do right before the prelims itself?
Before prelims, see, for example, if you are starting, I'll tell you my timeline which I followed. I started preparations around June in one year. So by December, I had completed the classes for optional. And there was a test series for optional at that time in December, which covered almost all the topics. Not full test series, topic wise test series. So optional was somewhat settled, I think maybe fifty percent or sixty percent I would have covered at that time and it was almost done. So then I started with G S because prelims test series were coming up. So weekly, based on the weekly schedule, I used to study prelims. And for G S, what I did was, I used to do answer writing mostly. So that was my thing, so what you call, along with prelims test series, you have to do some mains answer writing in terms of G S. And maybe by, if the prelims date is in June, you stop to, what you call, you convert your total preparation hours into prelims by April mid or April end. So for two months, you totally devote to prelims and prelims test series, so before that you have to do on and off mains and optional always. And then the day after prelims is over, you again start with answer writing for G S and optional revision.
Hello, Roji, Dice again. One more question, so you have classified the, say, some general questions into environment, disaster management, economy, geography, politics, etc. So how we can use that in while preparing itself in paper two? Will that be, say, will it be helpful if you classify the, classify the paper two into those aspects or those topics, as well as we identify a question in geography optional as this is a politic question, I might be going to write it as a politic. Rather than that, I should avoid and like make it into geography.
Yeah, so topics, aligning the syllabus topics based on G S will be helpful for that, this delineating part. Suppose if you are in paper two, there are a lot of general topics, if you categorize them into disaster management and whatever the broad categories which you have. And the out of that itself, for example, in topics like environment and disaster management, a geography answer and the G S answer will somewhat be on the same lines, except for any extra diagram or any theory if they ask. Okay, so but the other parts will be totally aligned towards G S. And we'll have a tendency to write a G S answer, like an international relation or a geopolitical, geopolitics related question. That might be, the more chances are that we slip on to that G S part. So those things, if you delineate the syllabus very well, it will be, it will be easier for us to identify that, okay, this is a topic from this G S, but optional related points have to be factored. So and what, what is the benefit of delineating syllabus based on that is you will be able to identify this question when, when you approach it in the optional paper, that okay, this is, has to be dealt in specifically in geographical way. So delineating portions will be able, you will be able to identify the question category in the actual paper too. So that will be helpful and in preparation, as I said, environment and D M, you can somewhat it is more of overlapping. You can prepare the same material, but for the other parts, you have, you try to practice G S questions in geographical manner so that your thinking process is changed.
Hello, sir, am I audible?
Yeah.
Sir, I just wanted to know if you had done your preparation along with work or have you, did you devote completely to studies? For a particular period of time, like were you preparing along with your professional work or like had you taken a particular year out for your preparation completely?
Yeah, I had, I will see, I was working in Mumbai, so I was maybe newspaper reading and all I started from there. But for studies properly, I took leave from my previous job and I came to Driven to study.
Okay, so it's like, how did you manage your studies, like then you were working, like, like how, how did you, like, did you start off with the N C R Ts or cover, did you start off with the static portion? And did you just transit to the other dynamic part slowly or like, why you're doing multiple things at a single time itself?
Okay, so while working, my time, which I could devote to U P S E preparations was very less. So I, what you call, I started with the low hanging fruit or the easiest subjects. So N C R Ts are the easiest subjects, so history was one thing which I could not, what you call, understand or remember when which I could do for time when I had free time. So I removed history from my list, so I focused more on economy and geography and the general, other general topics which you can learn from newspapers, like international relations. Like, I never used to read the articles on international relations in that focused manner before that. So all those things I started off when I was working and nothing related to practicing questions and all. Just reading newspapers, the editorial part, I used to make notes so that it's, that it's not for revision but to inculcate the habit of writing, so when I was in Mumbai, I was working in a software company. So we totally lost touch of writing, but U P S E is more, almost everything happens in writing. So that change was a difficult thing for me, so for that practice only, I started reading newspapers and making notes of my own. So that writing practice and writing speed at least catches up. But maybe, I don't know if that helped in my content creation, content creation mostly happened after I resigned and came. But at least I was familiar with the, maybe the international bodies or something like that, or the economic, economic concepts which appeared in the newspaper. But if you ask a question from that, I won't be able to answer at that point in time, but at least I was familiar. So that was the basic thing I did, N C R Ts, I read the economic part and geography part when I was working, that's all. From, I found websites which said that you have to read from eight standard and standard and all, so that itself takes time, so I did cover at least maybe one or two standards of textbooks, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Roji, can you please stop the screen sharing? I think you have some questions in the chat box also. There is one question, sir, how, yeah. Yeah, there is one question, how to use perspectives in geography answers?
Perspectives in geography, so that is mostly a theoretical part where the writing style itself is a bit different. Apart from, I said about the logical connections being the factor which promoted me to take geography. So in perspectives of geography, the writing style is a bit different. I have not fully tried to link all those concepts with my answers in paper two or paper one. Because that seemed a bit difficult task for me, but I think people have done it. For me, I restricted the study on perspectives to that part itself. At least very few portions only I tried to connect with each other, maybe I don't remember the exact portions, but the, if the question itself demanded that I did, otherwise I don't, I did not try to artificially make a connection between perspectives and the actual concept in real life. So that was mostly a static study for me. Only thing is, I tried to do it in a timeline basis, what school of thought came up. So the general approach which we followed in that time was, suppose if a question of on regarding one school of thought came up, what was the approach till then? So that we started off as introduction, then we explained the, the perspective or the theory or the school of thought that was in consideration, then we moved on to how it could not be applied or how it did not match with the real world expectations and then closure was how somebody improved on that model or how somebody improved on that aspect. So this was a general structure which we followed to perspectives. Per se, I did not try to connect everything with perspectives at that level.
Any more questions?
Sir, how much marks you get in E P S?
I got two seventy six.
It was in twenty sixteen examination, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I still remember like, what, there are a group of students like Rojit, Atul, Dipin, then Arjun Pontian, I still remember, I think their marks are like two seventy six, two seventy seven, seventy eight. Yeah, all are like good marks, like very similar marks, yeah. So in that year, it was one of the good marks and optional.
Sir, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Sir, how to answer G S one geography and optional geography? For example, if they ask continental difference in G S one and the same question as in optional, we have to define it differently or the same answers could be written in.
Mostly the answer in G S geography, you can restrict to what you can gather from your N C R T textbook. Eleventh and twelfth or other grades, okay, so that will be enough for your G S one geography. And maybe add a map or maybe add a illustration for that matter. So restrict your G S geography to that part, but for optional geography, you might have to mention about how different people contributed or how that concept came up itself. So optional will have that part, G S you can restrict your points to that in your N C R T boundary.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello. Hello, sir.
Yes.
Sir, sir, how small doubts about maps, sir? It's difficult to understand maps, some points and lakes and something about, please tell me about maps.
You have difficulty in understanding maps or depicting in answers, you're saying?
Understanding maps, first of all.
Okay.
In some places.
See, mostly you don't do your maps as a standalone study, that is the major suggestion I would give. You suppose if you try to, I have done that, so that did not work for me, I tried on one day and I thought I'll understand the major locations, industrial locations or major lakes in one continent by one go. So that did not happen for me, so what I did was, when, when you're studying geomorphology or when you're studying concepts of climatology and geomorphology or that physical setting part, you keep your atlas side by side and then just familiarize with that part day by day. You won't be able to memorize the locations in one go, in one stretch. So that was one good thing which we had, we had, when we attended our classes in Ireland, what happened was we used to have a harmonious study of maps along with the concepts which were taken. So if something related to, suppose you want to outline the fold mountains or block mountains, that is the initial geographical feature which we start with. So there used to be a logical explanation for why these things will come there. So that is how we connected locations, only the names which we'll have to remember, but at least if you give a map of North America or Asia at any point in time. uh North America or Asia at at any point in time, I'll be able to say what type of feature it is if not name it. So naming, we understood it day by day by familiarizing with maps, if we when we revise geomorphology, we again sit with map on with atlas and then see it and read the notes, so don't go by uh memorizing maps in one go, that will be like, that will be a standalone thing in your preparation methodology. The issue, the method should be you study one topic and then a maps, map study should be integrated with that. Why suppose if you are studying theories of geomorphology, then what are the old features, ancient features, all these things you can you should be able to outline in a map based on logical explanations, so that is where my in my preparation that coaching helped in that part. Basically, that is how these uh the classes eased my effort, otherwise I would have to sit and memorize this part. So classes eased my effort in bringing that logical connections, so that that part you should check for because in for sup- suppose if you are underst- trying to learn the resource locations in India. Most of the locations will have some logical explanation why bauxite is there or why iron is there. And all, but when you suppose if you take the chapter of resources in Kula or N C R T and start with it. They might not give that logical explanation why it comes there. So that part you will have to figure out, so that part was easy done easily by who have used such classes for me. So that is how I approached map study.
Thank you.
I would like to add on here, everyone has to understand that map study as Rojit said, it won't happen on a single day. It will take some time, so you need to be very patient. It will take at least like two, three months to complete the entire world map as well as the Indian map because uh you cannot start with the map study all of a sudden, you need to understand the logic first. You need to have a very systematic logical understanding, then only you'll be able to retain the information. Making up the making up of the list of like mountains or platios or any resource location and mugging up the facts. That kind of approach is very difficult and that kind of approach won't actually help in U P S E. So the most important thing is you need to be very patient. And the second thing is if you come across a particular location or if you come across a particular uh any relief features, you have to highlight it in your map and you have to give yourselves the reminders. Every day, I suggest like every day you have to sit with your atlas for like fifteen, twenty minutes every day. Because if you if you want to remember this, the the port or the many things, what you have to do is you have to see it, so once you see it and you keep on giving yourself the reminders, then things will be automatically done. So you don't have to take any extra effort of by hearting the names and all, so that will be automatically done. Once you actually what, once you actually go through that particular process.
Hello, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, compulsory for in optional subject of geography to attend your draw all the questions in all, draw the map into all the questions.
It's not compulsory that map should be there, but there are certain questions. Map, if you are able to depict, it is very well and good, that shows your understanding of the subject and maybe uh figures have a more impact on the examiner, but there might be some questions where you can manage without maps. In this uh where some of the questions which we discussed in the which falls in the very general category. There might not be need for maps, you don't need to push in maps, for example, digital. Suppose if that question is on efficiency of digital India or something like that. If it is a speci- very specific initiative, you just analyze the geographical perspective of that, no need to put in force maps and all. But if there is any diagram that really helps in breaking the monotony of the answer writing process in that entire paper. So that is the basic use of maps and what you call diagrams in geography. You don't have to force maps in all questions, but whenever there is any location of spatial analysis, you will have to definitely put it.
Any more questions?
Sir, I am myself far with you again, I have a doubt, sir. So uh it isn't a very normal doubt only, what uh what all corrections have you made in your successful attempt like for if do and don't like what what do you think that you have you have achieved that rank that you have today? What all did you do right?
Major focus was on answer writing practice. So uh what I did in my initial days was to keep on studying, maybe attain more knowledge. And then, okay, I'll be confident, initially I was not confident of appearing in examinations, not just the final U P S E I'm saying. Some if a test series is being conducted, I was not confident about writing answers, I was aware, I was very conscious that, okay, someone will read my answer, what they think of me, but then I I understood with time that that is not uh you can't attain knowledge and then write examinations. So that is not possible and that is not expected of you in this U P S E preparations itself, so better if you complete at least one module of classes, you start writing, writing practice is the most important thing. And anyway, the one different view which I adopted, I don't know, most of people will have adopted. I was studying for mains in my initial days till, as I told you, till December or January, I was concentr- totally concentrating on mains only. And after that only I started my prelims preparations, so prelims, I started a bit late. Uh so that helped in my uh mains con- confidence in appearing for mains, so answer writing is the main confidence booster, so even if I have a chance, I will do that again and again, so. As early as you start answer writing, you will develop your uh skill confidence as well as your skill to present your answers. So that's that is the main thing which I would like to suggest. Don't concentrate fully on prelims and objective questions, that is just one part and the major part is means examination which is totally descriptive. So as I told you, I was working in a corporate version, a software company where I had lost, I never used to use pens itself. So but that ch- change, we have to force on ourselves that we have to write everything. So that was the major, that will be the major suggestion which I would like to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello, sir.
Yes.
Uh sir, what are the online sources you have preferred for geography optional?
Uh actually, I never took on, I was in Driven for my preparations, so my test series and classes were mostly centered in Ireland only, I very few practice questions I did from online, that was also based on previous year questions. So my writing practice and study in geography optional was mostly concentrated on the previous year questions and local offline study.
Sir, I'm asking about the online reports or we have.
Online reports, okay, first first, I heard it wrong. So uh online reports, it's based on, see, uh one thing I told you already, it was uh for the examples and case studies, I used to pick up uh annual reports of ministries. For example, if you go to Ministry of Punjab's website or whatever ministry it is now, you will get uh the best Punjab award and all those things, listings will be there, so that will be my uh uh this uh examples and case study part. Then there for reports, I used to refer to world development reports, there will be an executive summary for all these big reports. So that will be useful for us, then for urbanization, uh world development report and economic survey, I used to, I have properly maintained proper notes for that. So majorly these three reports I used and then it was all based on the topic of study. If at all, uh something like for environment and biogeography, you will get lot of studies online regarding coral bleaching and regarding the new uh environmental legislations and new trends and all from U N websites and all, so that and all, I don't read the entire report, but for the answer specific uh parts, I used to prepare from, I used to take from the executive summary, that's all. Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Sir, hi, I I had one more, sir.
Yes.
Sir, how deep we need to go for this answer, because in climatology, direct climatology, uh I could not able to understand some of the parts in climatology.
Which uh I I in depth as in you have to understand till where to go from the questions itself, so some questions, some topics wherein there will be lot of material on static part. We might not have to go that much deep into the theory part, it's based on the questions, so take a take a stock of the questions which have been asked from climatology and focus on that part first. What theories are being asked and what is the type of application questions being asked? So based on that only you go into the theory part, I think in climatology, uh it's again mostly you can understand the global climate, general pattern using logical connections that might not be properly given in books, but there can be a specific pattern which can be understood uh like division of climates based on the geographical features. So I don't know what specific area you are referring to if you did not understand, but try to do that, uh what you call get that logical connection, if you are not able to find it yourself, it might be because you need uh some help from an coaching notes or you need actual coaching, that will make your job easier. So depth is uh depth of a topic, you have to decide based on the questions coming from that topic. So take a look at the climatology questions and check if uh how much you have to go deeper. Geomorphology, I have faced questions which they have gone very deep, they have asked for theories and understanding of theories which have been very deep, so we might not be able to un- answer it hundred percent, but climatology, I think it is manageable.
Uh since the question is on climatology, I would like to add on. It's basically what you can do is in climatology, you start with the very basic concepts in climatology. Okay, you need to understand the temperature, the pressure belts, Coriolis force, parallel slope. Those basic concepts first you need to understand and also structure of a post here and all. And then what you can actually do is apply all these principles on the map of world. So applying all these principles on the ma- map of world, that you should have a logical application where you should be in a position to talk about, okay, this part of the world, this is the climate and this is the reason behind it. So that kind of logical understanding will actually help you regarding like you will be knowing like the entire world map. What climate were and why, that kind of approach you have to take it, then I think it would be easy for you. Or examiner gives you any questions later to that, you would be able to answer. And apart from that, what you can actually do is uh what apart from this, uh we have like the topics like cyclones, tropical cyclones, temperate cyclones. Uh types of precipitation classifications and all, so that we have to deal it when you very separate manage, yeah. So any more questions you have?
Thank you, sir, now I understand, really, I don't do it by my own, I need some help, I need coaching, sir. Thank you, sir.
So I think uh before winding up the session, I would request Rojit to talk a few things about like your work profile. Indian Revenue Survey, I think that would be also beneficial for the fresh aspirants to know more about the service.
So currently, I am posted in Chennai as Assistant Commissioner. So uh basically, the profile of a I R S officer, so I R S we might all know, divided into two major links, one is uh income tax and the other is G S T, so one deals with direct access, the other deals with indirect access. So I am part of the Indian Revenue Service Income Tax, so we are basically into the job of uh doing tax administration of direct taxes, so all the corporate taxes, personal income tax, international taxation issues. Then related whatever issues are administered by income tax commissioners and assistant commissioners beyond uh below that. So majorly three acts, three or two, three acts which we implement, one is the majorly the income tax act. Then Black Money Act and the Benami Property Act, so these three acts, uh we are the implementing authorities, so you will be trained in uh these acts as per your uh in your what you call training period. On the field, uh our job, what we are currently doing is what is called as assessment, basically we'll be scrutinizing the income tax returns of people or for me, it's companies, so I assess their income, whether they have done any misappropriation or there is any uh tax evasion that is happening, so based on that, I have to pass orders in saying that, okay, you have evaded this much tax and this much is payable, so this is one part of my work. The other part is enforcement side, the income tax investigation being popularly uh they do the all the raids and searches, so basically you'll have to develop a case for search action, in search is the legal term for the common parlance term raid. So you'll identify a case, you will work on it, you will have a team, so then on based on uh various local intelligence and other inputs, you will be executing a raid on that, so this is another part. So these are the mostly the field jobs that we are engaged in. Apart from that, there are other very specialized wings like international taxation, transfer pricing, which are very booming sectors and require very uh what you call professional approach to that, so economy is basically what we are dealing with. Who by whom we have across the table are very highly qualified people, very affluent people, they have all the resources, so to counter them legally is what is our job is, so we have to be updated on tax laws, on what is the economy going on. What is going on in the economy, all those things, so that is the basic profile of our job.
Okay, I think we'll wind up the session. Uh it was a wonderful session, I should say. Uh because I guess all the aspirants must have benefited from it, especially related to uh you are actually what differentiated the G S answer and geography answer. I think that was very much helpful for the aspirants with geography optional. So uh thank you very much, uh thank you for your time. Uh so I hope we'll have uh sessions like this in the future also. Thank you, thank you, Roji. Uh so there, I I don't, yeah, I think Nicholas already said uh the mindset we have after after the session, okay. Uh so it will be really helpful, it it is going to help many aspirants can who are struggling to address this issue, so most of them are actually hardworking students who are very serious about their attempts and very very serious about the U P S E. However, they, many of them were struggling with this issue. I hope uh they are able to clearly differentiate between how how say how to change an answer from G S to uh geography, okay, and thanks a lot, thanks a lot, Roji Jones for sparing uh a very valuable evening, a holiday evening with us and sharing your valuable knowledge, thank you, Rojit.
Thank you, thank you. We'll have hopefully more sessions like this.
Sure, sure. Okay, all right, we'll end up the session, we'll end the session.